We're going to call the hearing to order. This is LaSalle County Zoning Board of Appeals. It is November 19th, 2025, approximately 5:00 PM. My name is Sandy Billard. I am Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Jeremiah Adams is our Legal Counsel. Lauren Groomier, Supervisor of Field Operations. And Brian Giff, Land Use Director. Board members, if you could please introduce yourselves. Fred, if you'd begin.
Brett Seville.
Jim Meyer-Hafer.
Deb Lane.
Larry Lewis.
Gary Blankenship.
Larry Langston.
Thank you. I'll lead a motion to approve the previous meeting minutes of October 15th, 2025, please. Deb. Jim, a second. Thank you. Are there any corrections or comments? Hearing none. We'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All ayes, the motion's approved. I'm going to give a brief overview of the hearing. For those of you who have not attended a hearing before, I'm going to just give you just a brief overview of what to expect tonight. Each petition will be heard individually. Evidence, testimony, and comments introduced shall not be unduly repetitious and shall be relevant to the application, which means appropriate to what is being considered and to the locations cited in the application. Any person wishing to introduce evidence at this hearing shall have submitted such evidence at least 24 hours prior to the hearing. All present must exhibit behavior that is orderly and respectful. If not, as per the zoning board's rules of procedure, the Chair may impose reasonable limitations on evidence, testimony, and/or comments presented, which I will do to preserve the integrity of this hearing. The order of the hearing shall be as follows. Petitioner presents evidence and testimony, questions are permitted. Interested persons present evidence and testimony, questions permitted. Rebuttal evidence and testimony by the petitioner, questions permitted. Closing statements and comments by interested persons. Closing statement and comments by the petitioner. Finding of fact by the zoning board. And then a final recommendation to the county board. I will ask that if you intend to speak at this hearing, I will need for you to do so by a microphone, please. Are there any questions? All right, hearing none. All persons offering testimony and comment at this public hearing, in person or by electronic means, shall do so under oath. Do we have anybody electronically on?
Yes, we have a, um, there's two, and Mark.
If I may, it's Mark Bastash and Carlos Guzman.
All right. Just want to make sure that you did hear that you will have to testify under oath. Everyone, if you tend to speak.
Yes.
Thank you. If you intend to speak at all tonight, that means giving testimony, answering questions, making comments, you will have to do so under oath. Please stand. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give at this hearing shall be the truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. You may be seated. We will begin with Petition 25-25, Special Use, Sharon M. Trumbo Family Trust. Brian, could you give us a summary statement of the application, please?
The petitioner is requesting a new lot of less than 35 acres in the A1 District. It's located at approximately 3121 North Route 71 in Rutland Township. Mailings went out to adjoining property owners on October 31st, and it was published, notice was published in the newspaper on November 1st.
Thank you. Any response to the certified letters?
There was not.
Thank you. All right, if the petitioner would come forward, please, to present your evidence and testimony. And if I could have your full name before you begin, please?
Yes, Steve Trumbo.
Thank you.
So, um, my father and my uncle own the family farm, and we would like to rezone two acres for a single-family home for myself and my wife, so that we can help take care of the farm. They're both up in their 90s now, and, as you know, an arm takes quite a bit of maintenance and care. And so, we'd like to build a home there. It is currently not tilled, never has been tilled, to my knowledge. That's about the only thing I can say.
Okay. Are you ready for some questions?
Sure.
Thank you very much. ZBA and Counsel, questions, please? Yes, Gary?
So I wanted to make clear where you have your own well, your own septic system there and that, so it would be nothing drawn from the farm site?
That's correct.
Be all correct, be all separate.
Yes, Jim?
How many, how far?
About 2,000 square feet. Yeah.
Any additional questions, Jim?
No.
Okay. Zoning Board, any other questions? Deb?
Um, it looks like, is it like where that 71 is?
Yes, it's right in this little triangle here.
So like, it looks like that's a waterway or something? Does it flood?
Yes, there is a creek there. It does not flood, no, this is not in the flood area. But there are times where this culvert under the Route 71 here is pulled to the brim. But the walls of this creek right here where the house would be are probably 15 feet high, so it's, it's up there pretty high.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Zoning Board, additional questions? Hearing none. County Board members, questions? Hearing none. Staff, questions? Hearing none. Members of the public, questions? Hearing none. Brian, has anyone other than the petitioner submitted relevant documented evidence and testimony to your office?
Uh, no, there has not.
Is there anyone present, present other than the petitioner who'd like to provide a relevant public comment on this petition? Hearing none. Brian, has correspondence offering written public comment to this petition been received?
Uh, there's been no additional correspondence.
Sir, is there anything else you'd like to say?
No, that's, uh, that's all I can think of.
All right, you can take a seat. Thank you very much.
Do you have a microphone?
Yes, please. Brian, to the best of your knowledge, is the application as presented in compliance with the standards and conditions imposed in the LaSalle County zoning ordinance?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Zoning Board, ready for the finding of fact? The Zoning Board of Appeals shall not recommend that a special use be granted as part of this ordinance unless it shall make findings based upon the evidence presented to it in each specific case, demonstrating consideration with respect to the following. Section 14.10-5, Standards for Special Uses A, that the granting of any special use is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the ordinance, and will not be injurious to the neighborhood, detrimental to the public welfare, or in conflict with the county's comprehensive plan for development. And specifically, that the granting of this special use will not impair an adequate supply of light and air to adjacent property. Mayor Hafer?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Blankenship?
Yes.
Langston?
Yes.
Seville?
Yes.
Will not increase the hazard from fire or other dangers to said property. Mayor Hafer?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Blankenship?
Yes.
Langston?
Yes.
Seville?
Yes.
Will not unduly increase traffic congestion in the public streets and highways. Mayor Hafer?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Blankenship?
Yes.
Langston?
Yes.
Seville?
Yes.
Will not increase the potential for flood damages to adjacent property. Mayor Hafer?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Blankenship?
Yes.
Langston?
Yes.
Seville?
Yes.
Will not incur additional public expense for fire protection, rescue, or relief. Mayor Hafer?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Blankenship?
Yes.
Langston?
Yes.
Seville?
Yes.
Will not otherwise impair the public health, safety, comfort morals, or general welfare of the inhabitants of LaSalle County, nor will it otherwise create a nuisance. Mayor Hafer?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Blankenship?
Yes.
Langston?
Yes.
Seville?
Yes.
After hearing the evidence and testimony presented, and completing the finding of fact, is there a motion for a recommendation to the county board for the petition to be approved? Gary?
So moved.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Larry? Oh. Larry? Langston? Are there questions, comments, conditions? Hearing none. We'll call for the vote. Mayor Hafer?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Blankenship?
Yes.
Langston?
Yes.
Seville?
Yes.
Motion passes. Brian, the date the petition will be presented to the county board?
December 8th.
Thank you. All right. That's all that we have for your petition tonight. You're welcome to sit and watch, or leave whenever you'd like. Petition 25-26, Special Use, Aurora Solar LLC. Brian, would you like to give us a summary statement of the application, please?
Uh, the, uh, the petitioner is requesting to place a commercial solar energy facility on multiple property PIN numbers within Allen Township. Notices were mailed to adjoining property owners on October 31st and November 3rd, and notice was published in the newspaper on November 3rd.
Thank you. Any response to the certified letters?
Uh, there was several. We received several emails, some communication, written communications, that they wished to have read during public comment.
All right.
And we also have one, uh, one person submitting evidence.
All right. Then we'll hear those at public comment. All right, if the petitioner would come forward, please?
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the LaSalle County ZBA, members of the county board, and members of the public that are present. My name is Christopher Massey. I'm an attorney that represents Avangrid Power. I want to introduce you today to the lead developer, Gina Christian, on their Otter Creek Solar Project located in Allen Township. Thank you.
That's fine, yes. And Gina, before I have you begin, I'm going to go ahead and ask Vicki from Soil and Water to give her report, and then we'll begin with you. Thank you. Vicki, if you could go ahead, your full name, please?
Vicki Heath, LaSalle County Soil and Water Conservation District. For this project, it started with 2,254 acres, and then a little bit later on, there was an additional parcel added. So for this case, I have two Lisas. They're very similar in score, but I just wanted to clarify why I'll be giving two Lisas. The first one, on the 2,200-plus acres, that one, the land evaluation or the soils portion, that scored an 83. And then on the site assessment, that scored 120, for a total score of a 203 out of 300 points. Now, on that additional 172-acre piece, the soils for that one was 86 out of 100, and then the site assessment was the same at 120, so that is a 206. So very similar site. If these were combined together, I would say that it would be about a 204 scoring, but because they were so far, completed so far apart, we just thought it'd be better to do that other one separately. Now, for my concerns for the project, this one is quite a bit larger than our typical solars that we have seen in our county. For this one, tile is a major issue when you're covering that many acres, so we just want to make sure that there's either a tile study for these producers, so that if something is broken, it can be repaired. Also, it'd be helpful if they knew, the producers knew where their tiles were, but a lot of times, they don't. So that's where the tile survey comes in, to just help give that buffer of assistance to those producers, to know where those tiles are, if they're broken, so they can be repaired easily. Next up is access roads. There are several parcels on this piece, so access roads will be needed for each one. The one thing that we do recommend is that unless the access road is coming off of a township, county highway, state highway, there, there should be no culverts in those. So if it crosses a low-water crossing, we would really prefer no culverts. They make more of an issue when you have those access roads going through the solar arrays. Next up, there are two parcels within the Allen Township Drainage District. I've also provided the company with the attorney that oversees that drainage district, just in case there's any issues there regarding the solar array and the drainage district that those parcels lie in. Next up is, there are four pipelines that cross over this area, so I did name those pipeline companies. I'm sure that you guys will look into those as you, if this project goes forward, and as you call for building permits and Julie and all that good stuff. On eight parcels, it looks like here, we've got some conservation reserve program practices, grass waterways, pollinator plantings, filter strips. Those contract lengths all vary, depending on when they were put in. We do need to make sure that on those parcels, that those contracts are honored or taken out of the contract. Some of these, at this point in time, have expired, and then there are a few more that are coming up for expiration next year, so that point may be a moot point by the time you guys develop, which I'm not sure what your timeline is on that. But just keep an eye on those contracts, because we do not want our producers in trouble for not having that contract fulfilled. Last thing here is ground cover. So with the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, they have a Pollinator Friendly Solar Site Act. We would really encourage you to use that planting under these solar arrays once they're established. They can, with, with pollinator plantings, they can get a little messy. So we just want to make sure that they are taken care of, that the weeds are maintained, and that, you know, if we need to get in there and maintain them, that you guys give a number to the producers, that they can call you and say, hey, we have a thistle problem or what have you. So with that, that is all of our concerns.
Thank you, Vicki. And I'm assuming a copy that has gone to the developer, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
And for clarification, I would like everyone to know a LISA score is of an interest to the Zoning Board of Appeals and to the county board, and is presented as factual information, but in accordance with the Illinois State governing wind and solar commercial facilities, it will not be considered as evidence with regard to this application. Thank you. And I do want to apologize, I'm having a bit of trouble with my voice tonight, so if you hear it coming up and down and going off the rails, I sound like a teenage boy. Please, just bear with me. Thank you very much. Full name, please.
My name is Gina Christian with Avangrid Power. Good evening, members of boarding, the zoning board of appeals, staff, and neighbors. Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Gina Christian.
Can I have you speak up just a little bit more, ma'am?
Sure. Thank you. My name is Gina Christian, and I'm a project developer with Avangrid Power. I'm here this evening seeking your vote for a positive recommendation to the county board for special use permit for the Otter Creek Solar Project. We filed the application for special use with the Land Use Department in October, and subsequently submitted addendums to the application for which each board member has a copy of. As part of our planning process, we're requesting an additional two years on the permit term to allow the project to begin construction as late as 2029, under a four-year permit term. Tonight, I'll introduce the proposed 150-megawatt solar project planned for LaSalle County. I will cover the purpose, the location, and the reasons why we're requesting a special use permit. Our goal this evening is to walk through the project transparently, how it works, why it's cited where it is, and the benefits that it provides, and how it meets every requirement of LaSalle County zoning ordinance. While I'm here to give you an overview of the application, our experts are here to answer any additional questions that you may have. Tonight's presentation follows a simple agenda. I'll begin with a brief overview of our company and the development term, and then we'll outline the solar project, the scope, the components, and the expected timeline. We'll discuss the economic benefits, including the tax revenue and job creation. We'll cover the project lifestyle, life cycle, land and environmental considerations, and finally, we'll review each of the required standards for special use. Now, let's talk a little bit about who we are as a company. Avangrid is a developer, owner, and operator of over 80 energy projects throughout the United States, and we have the third-largest entree wind fleet in the country. Our projects have led to the creation of over 70,000 new jobs, both directly and indirectly. Over the past two decades, we've developed over 10.5 gigawatts of clean energy across the US, partnering with communities just like you. Our mission is to support reliable energy while increasing tangible benefits for the community. What sets us apart is our commitment to transparency, long-term partnerships, and responsible land stewardship. We're here to partner with you and for you to, and to earn your trust. Avangrid has been involved in successful wind and solar projects in the region, and we're excited about bringing this opportunity and to bring those benefits here to this Our team has decades of experience during developing renewable energy projects across the Midwest, including wind and solar facilities already operating here in LaSalle County. Avangrid owns and operates Otter Creek Wind in Allen Township, and Asagro Flats Wind is currently under construction in Groveland Township. Asagro Flats Solar has already received its special use permit and will follow a similar timeline as Otter Creek Solar. All in all, we understand the land, the agricultural heritage, and the importance of long-term Next up, I'd like to introduce the team. Once again, I'm Gina Christian. I'm the lead developer for the Otter Creek Wind Project. We've got Jeff Frankemeyer, the Midcontinent Development Director. We've got our permitting lead, Jessica Seder. We've got our legal counsel, Mike Mas, Chris Massey. We've got our design lease, Carlos Guzman, who's joining us virtually, and Doug Zarnofsky, who is in the room and is with us. And then we have our property values consultant, Michael Marousse with Marousse &amp; Co. Our drain tile consultant, Rudy Dixon. Our wildlife biologist consultant, Meredith Rodriguez. Our vegetation management plan consultant, Richard Reinicki from RES. Our acoustical engineer, Mark Bastash, who's also joining us virtually from Jacobs. And then our land use planner, Ryan Kassaric. Here, Avangrid plans to demonstrate the key components of the Otter Creek Solar Project. First, the project fully conforms to all county ordinances and the standards for special use permit. We've designed this project to meet or exceed every local requirement. Next, the solar farm is a temporary use of the land, and throughout its life, we maintain it responsibly. The land is protected, stabilized, and kept in productive conditions, so that it can return to the agricultural use in the future if needed. Third, the project will deliver substantial benefits to local tax bodies, including schools, the county, and other public services. The long-term stable tax revenue helps support education and reduces financial pressure on local taxpayers. Lastly, but most importantly, the landowners who are participating in the project believe that this is the best use of their land. They see it as a way to generate a steady income, diversify their operations, and support clean energy development in the community. Now, I'll give you a brief overview of the project and what it'll deliver in terms of energy and benefits. We're developing a 150-megawatt solar farm with participation from 21 landowners across roughly 2,100 acres, including easements. Construction could begin as early as 2026, with the project expected to be fully operational in 2029. As part of our planning process, we're requesting an additional two years on the permit term to ensure adequate time for pre-construction activities. Granting a four-year permit would greatly enhance the project's ability to navigate interconnection delays, equipment procurement, and the completion of a power purchase agreement. In its first year, the solar farm is expected to produce roughly 340,000 megawatt-hours of electricity, which is enough to power roughly 28,000 homes. That represents a meaningful contribution to the local energy supply and renewable generation in this region. Finally, the project aligns with the growing demand for renewable energy. AI and data center demand is at an all-time high and is continuing to grow, and this project helps meet those statewide and market-driven goals. Overall, the project brings clean power benefits to local communities and supports long-term sustainability goals. So the Otter Creek Solar Project is thoughtfully sited on privately-owned agricultural land where existing field grades and open landscape are well-suited for solar. Only a fraction of the project experiences disturbance, and all the topsoil remains on site. Setbacks meet or exceed county standards, and natural vegetation buffers reduce visibility from public roads and nearby homes. Drainage and field hydrology will remain intact through engineered stormwater controls. By allowing the soil to rest under perennial vegetation, the land is preserved for future agricultural use. The drain, the design co-locates with existing wind infrastructure, reducing the footprint and takes advantage of shared facilities. Overall, the site remains consistent with the rural character of LaSalle County. Here, we're highlighting the shared infrastructure that supports both the solar farm and the wind farm within the energy complex. First, we have a combined operations and maintenance facility, and by centralizing the O&M activities, we gain efficiencies in staffing, equipment storage, and long-term maintenance planning across both technologies. Next is the 345 KV Switching Station. This is the high, this is the high-voltage hub that ties together the generation assets and routes power into the regional transmission network. Using a single switching station for both projects reduces the footprint cost and permitting complexity. The interconnection substation is the key interface point with the grid operator. Revolted transformation and protection systems are located. It serves as the formal point of interconnection for both solar and wind facilities. And finally, both projects share the gentai and the transmission line, which delivers power from the substation to the broader grid. Shared transmission infrastructure significantly lowers capital costs and minimizes land disturbances. So overall, this shared equipment approach minimizes new construction and environmental impact, and creates operational efficiencies, reduces redundancy, and optimizes the infrastructure footprint while still meeting all interconnection and reliability. and optimizes the infrastructure full footprint while still meeting all interconnection and reliability requirements. On this slide, we're outlining the major physical components that make up the solar project. First, the solar photovoltaic panels themselves. These panels are made primarily of glass and aluminum, and the system is designed with a maximum tilt height of 15 feet, which keeps the profile low across the landscape. The panels are supported by steel piles that are driven about 6 to 9 feet into the ground. And it's important to note that no concrete is required, which helps protect the soil and makes for future land restoration much easier once the project is removed. Next, we have the inverters, which are the devices that convert the solar energy from DC to AC so that it can be used on the grid. These are located throughout the site in small equipment stations. All of the electricity that's produced on the site is connected through underground collection cables, which minimizes the above-ground infrastructure and helps maintain the visual character of the area. The project also includes access roads to safely reach equipment, security fencing to protect the facilities, and temporary lay-down yard that is used only during construction for storing materials and equipment. Next, I'll talk about the key benefits that the project brings to the community. First, in terms of job creation, the project's expected to generate around 300 temporary construction jobs, which provides a significant boost in local activity during construction. Once the project is operating, it'll support one to two long-term technician positions, and the overall increase in local spending will benefit businesses throughout the area. Next, the landowner benefits. Participating landowners collectively will earn approximately $2 million in lease payments every year, which provides stable and predictable income that supports family farms and local operations. In addition, we offer good neighbor payments to eligible nearby residents, ensuring that the benefits extend beyond just the participating properties. And finally, this project delivers the energy that we all need. It produces clean, renewable electricity, helps reduce emissions, and supports a healthier environment. It also contributes to the diversification of energy resources, making the grid more resilient. And because sunlight is a predictable, reliable fuel source, solar power helps stabilize long-term energy costs. Overall, the project brings jobs, economic benefits, and dependable clean energy to the community. In its first year, the project is projected to generate over $1 million in tax revenue. These funds support LaSalle County, local school districts, road districts, fire districts, libraries, and community colleges. This is stable, long-term funding without increased burden on residents. Over 20 years, cumulative tax benefits are projected to be 16 million. These resources provide generational support for schools and other public services. One of the most significant long-term benefits of this project will be the increased tax revenue to the county. Solar farms typically generate far more tax revenue per acre than traditional agricultural land use. To put this into perspective, I'll provide an example. A typical acre of farmland in Illinois might generate roughly $30 to $40 per acre in property taxes. By contrast, an acre within a solar project commonly generates $500 or more per year in local tax revenue. So, in practical terms, a solar farm can generate 10 times more tax revenue per acre than standard agricultural use. The Otter Creek Solar Project is around 2,100 acres that we have leased, and traditional agricultural use might bring in 60,000 to 80,000 per year in property tax revenue, whereas our solar project will bring in approximately $1 million in tax revenue annually. Now, I'll walk you through the full lifecycle of this utility-scale solar project, which spans roughly 50 years post the start of commercial operations. We begin on the left with the pre-development phase running from 2019 through 2025. During this phase, we focus on three core activities: identifying and evaluating potential sites, conducting feasibility studies, and building early relationships with community stakeholders. This phase establishes the foundation for all permitting, design, and regulatory work that follows. Moving into the development phase, which also spans from 2019 through present day, as many of the pre-development and development tasks run parallel. Here, the project transitions from a concept to a fully permitted and engineered asset. Key activities include securing long-term land leases, completing the detailed site design, and progressing through the interconnection process with PJM, their interconnection service operator. This is also where we obtain the special use permit, road use agreements, and other regulatory approvals that are required before construction. Once the project reaches the final investment decision, we enter the pre-construction and then the construction phases, covering approximately 2026 through 2029 and beyond. This includes procuring major equipment, preparing the site, installing the arrays and electrical systems, and then building out the substation and grid interconnection infrastructure. Construction concludes with system commissioning and energization. The timeline is entirely based on PJM's timeframe for commercial operations, which is important to note. From 2029 onward, the project enters a long-term operations and maintenance phase. This is a core value generating period, lasting roughly 50 years. So, the activities here include energy production, continuous performance and monitoring, both preventative and corrective maintenance measures to ensure that the system operates at peak efficiency for decades to come. And then finally, at the end of its life, the project transitions into decommissioning and recycling. This involves removing equipment, responsibly managing our recycling materials, and restoring the site in accordance with landowner agreements and regulatory requirements. Overall, we're illustrating the complete end-to-end lifecycle from early feasibility work through decades of clean energy production and ultimately responsible decommissioning. This slide highlights two important areas of coordination and responsibility: our work with the Soil and Water Conservation District and our commitments around decommissioning and restoring the site. First, on the Soil and Water Conservation District coordination. As Vicki mentioned, you know, their approval is required for the project's special use permit, and we work closely with them throughout the planning and construction process. You know, their role is to ensure that the project avoids wetlands, maintains the natural drainage patterns, and preserves farmland so that it remains viable long-term. Their oversight gives the community confidence that the land and the water resources are being protected. Next, we'll talk about the decommissioning and restoration, which is often one of the top questions that we receive from the public. Restoring the land is not optional. It's a contractual obligation in our lease agreements with participating landowners, but also with the Agricultural Impact Mitigation Agreement that we have entered into with the state, which details standards for protecting and restoring farmland in Illinois. The county also has specific decommissioning requirements which we fully comply with. These include providing financial assurance before the building permit is issued, ensuring that the funds are set aside so that decommissioning will occur even in the event of ownership changes in the future. When the project reaches the end of its life, the land is restored to its previous use. So, this includes restoring the soil, removing the steel piles by extracting them, and then removing the underground collection lines. The goal here is that when the facility is removed, the land is left in a productive condition so that this long-term land stewardship is a core part of how Avangrid develops and manages renewable energy projects. Next up, I will introduce Rudy Dixon with Huddleston McBride, who will give us an overview of the agricultural draining mapping and modification procedures.
Thank you. My name's Rudy Dixon. I'm with Huddleston McBride. Huddleston McBride has been in business for 49 years. We specialize in doing drain tile investigations all over the state of Illinois and the surrounding states. We do about 500 investigations a year throughout the state with four crews. So, the first slide here kind of shows the beginning of drain tiles. So, drain tile was installed in the beginning when wet prairie was changed over to farmland, and that passively continued until about the 1940s. In the 1940s to about 1970, the increase in technology helped the installation of drain tile become more easier to install. The game changer was in 1972. 1972 is when polyethylene tile was created, or plastic tile. That was when the drain tile boom really started. So, when I go back to 1940, that's when pattern drainage was started, and the pattern drainage was continued and increased once polyethylene tile was produced. Today, you see a lot of pattern-drained fields, not all, but quite a few. And this is done by using equipment that has GPS, lasers, and tile plows and trenchers. Pattern drainage is going to continue to be a big thing in agriculture, and we assume in 30 to 50 years that about 70% of the land will be, farmland will be, pattern-drained. So, when we do a drain tile investigation and modification procedures, there's about five different things that we look at. The first is, before we go to the field, we collect data such as topography, aerial photos, soils maps, hydrological maps, any existing drain tile maps that we can get our hands on. We compile all that data into what we call a base map, and this base map will then be given to the field crews to help assist in the investigation. The second step in a utility-scale solar project such as this is to do what we call a perimeter mutual drain survey. This survey focuses on locating tile that are coming into the property and exiting the property. Once we locate a tile that is ingressing into the property, we trace that tile through the property to either its outfall or to where it exits the property. The importance of this is, is these are what we call legal mutual drains. A legal mutual drain by law and per AMA needs to be maintained through the life of the solar facility. So, these drains are benefiting the upland lands of others, and it's extremely important to maintain the drainage through the solar farm for the life of the lease. The third step is to work with participating landowners of the project to identify any local drainage, drain tile that's specific to their parcels and any drainage problems they might have. From there, when we go in and we locate local systems, we can map those as well. And we map everything using GPS and state point coordinates, so all of our information can be used by the engineer and ourselves to do the mitigation of the project. So, the third step, or the fourth step, excuse me, is the actual mitigation planning, where we actually overlay our drain tile maps with the proposed pile maps, pile locations for the facility. And from there, we can determine how to reroute these drain tile and keep them functioning for the lifetime of the solar project. The fifth and final step is the actual installation. So, before we install, we have the piles actually physically staked in the field. So, when we reroute the tile, we can ensure that we're not rerouting it in a location where a pile is going to be driven. So, the next, let's get the page there, sorry. The next page is an example of a utility-scale perimeter investigation that we completed. The black solid lines around the perimeter indicate slit trenches. These were areas where we actually dug with an excavator, and they were in areas that were probable location for drain tile based off our research from the base maps. As you can see, some of these slit trenches, we found tile, some we did not. The gold stars that you see indicate drain tile that benefit the upland lands of others, while the green stars are where the drain tile actually egressed the property. So, we trace these tile through this particular property to their outfall. The drain tile map on the left, that's an example of our deliverable, is the map on the left. That map also includes local drainage. Those are the purple lines, which purple lines on our maps are typically polyethylene lines. So, that's the local drainage of that particular site. You can see it on the right-hand side as well, a little closer-up view. We work with the landowners to help, if they have any mapping. We realize that land changes hands, and some owners do not have any information, and that's okay. We proceed with our investigation the same way as we would the perimeter investigation. We cut slit trenches, and we hand probe and locate the drain tile with GPS the same way we would on the perimeter survey. So, this next slide, the image on the right shows the panels overlaid with the tile, and the black and white lines indicate the reroute of this particular drain tile, of the drain tile on this particular farm. So, we were able to propose a reroute plan that will guarantee that the tile maintains its drainage and everything is draining better, or as it was prior to the installation of the solar farm. Thank you.
Thank you, Rudy. So, next up, we'll go through how we propose to conform with LaSalle County's special use requirements. Here, we're addressing the first standard for special use. The standard requires granting, the standard requires that the granting of special use will not impair an adequate supply of light and air to any adjacent property. Our project fully complies with this requirement. First, our solar panels meet all county height limits, ensuring that they remain low-profile and do not obstruct surrounding properties. Second, we follow all required county setbacks. This includes maintaining 100 feet, 150 feet of separation from any occupied buildings, 50 feet from public rights-of-way, and 50 feet from any non-participating property lines. These measures ensure that neighboring properties continue to receive unobstructed access to light and air and that the project fits seamlessly within the local landscape. Next, we address standard number two. The standard requires that the granting of special use will not increase the hazard from fire or create other dangers to the property or surrounding area. Our project meets the standard through several layers of safety measures. First, all equipment is regularly inspected to ensure safety. We also perform preventive maintenance to keep every component in proper working order and to reduce the likelihood of any issues developing over time. In addition, we have a robust control system that's designed to detect any unforeseen problems. If an issue does occur, the system immediately shuts down and sends alerts to our operations and maintenance personnel so that they can quickly respond. And then finally, our access roads serve a dual purpose. They function as fire breaks, and they also ensure that emergency personnel can quickly reach any part of the site if needed. Together, these measures ensure that the project does not increase fire risk, and it maintains a safe environment for both the site and the surrounding properties. Standard number three. So, this standard requires that the granting of special use will not diminish the value of land or buildings near the proposed project. We comply with this requirement in several ways. First, we conducted a market impact analysis, and this analysis found no evidence that the project would negatively affect rural residential or agricultural property values in the surrounding area. This finding is consistent with broader national research on solar projects and property values. We also enter into good neighbor agreements, which help address concerns and ensure that those living closest to the project receive additional consideration. In addition, the project generates lease payments to participating landowners, which provides predictable, long-term income. And then finally, the community benefits from the increased tax revenue. This can support local services, like better-funded schools and stronger local government entities. Standard number four. This standard requires that the granting of special use will not unduly increase traffic congestion on public streets and highways. Our project conforms with this, or complies with this standard through careful planning and coordination. First, we're actively working toward road use agreements with Allen Township and LaSalle County. These agreements will outline the routes, the road use expectations, and any necessary improvements to ensure safe and responsible transportation during construction. We're also coordinating with the county engineer and the township road commissioner to plan transportation routing. This ensures that construction vehicles use appropriate roads and minimize impacts on local traffic patterns. It's important to note that construction traffic is temporary, and it's limited to the build-out phase of the project. We'll also be coordinating closely with local school districts on school bus traffic. Once the, once the project is operational, traffic will drop significantly. Ongoing operations require only minimal vehicle trips that'll be typically limited to routine maintenance visits. Now, we'll cover standard number five. This standard requires that granting special use will not increase the potential for flood damages to adjacent properties. Our project meets this standard through careful site evaluation and strict compliance with drainage and permitting requirements. First, there are no floodplains within the project area, which significantly reduces the risk of any flooding impacts. Second, any waterway or ditch crossings associated with the project will follow all applicable permits and regulatory approvals. This ensures the proper handling of surface water and protects natural drainage patterns. We will also comply with all drain tile requirements. That includes adhering to AMA guidelines, coordinating with landowners, meeting county requirements, and completing a full drain tile survey before a building permit is issued. Additionally, a drainage plan will be prepared and submitted prior to the building permit. This plan will ensure that runoff is properly managed and that drainage flows are maintained or approved. Standard number six. This standard requires that granting the special use will not create additional public expenses for fire protection, rescue, or relief services. Our project meets this requirement in several ways. First, the property tax revenue generated by the project helps support local services, including fire districts and emergency response agencies. This means that the project actively contributes financial resources rather than creates a burden. Before construction begins, we'll conduct training sessions with the local fire districts. This ensures that first responders are familiar with the site layout, the equipment, and emergency procedures. We're also committed to ongoing co-training with local emergency services throughout the life of the project. The partnership helps maintain readiness and clear communication in the unlikely event of an emergency. In addition, the equipment used in the project is highly reliable and minimizes the already low risk, or fire risk. Our operation and maintenance technicians are trained professionals who monitor and maintain the system to ensure safe performance. Finally, Avangrid maintains a strong company-wide commitment to safety, which guides every step of our planning, construction, and operations. These measures ensure that the project does not require additional public spending and actually strengthens local emergency capabilities. And then finally, we'll cover standard number seven for special use. This standard ensures that granting the special use will not impair public health, safety, comfort, morals, or general welfare of the county's residents. Our project supports this requirement in several ways. First, the project aligns with the county's comprehensive plan. By following the county's long-term land use vision, we help support sustainable growth and responsible development. Second, the project meets or exceeds all of the requirements that are laid out in the county's ordinance for solar farms. This includes standards for design, safety, screening, drainage, and operations. Beyond compliance, the project also brings benefits to the local community. The tax revenue generated by the project contributes to essential public services that supports residents throughout the county. And then finally, the project complies fully with all state and federal regulations, which ensures safe construction and operation and reinforces public health and welfare. Together, these commitments demonstrate that the project will not harm, but in many ways will actually enhance the well-being of the county and its residents. As we conclude, I want to briefly summarize why the project is an excellent fit for the county and why it fully meets the requirements for special use. First, the project adheres to all requirements of the zoning ordinance. We've demonstrated compliance across every section, from setbacks to safety to drainage to long-term land stewardship. Second, we've outlined throughout the presentation that we believe that the project conforms to all standards for special use. Each of the seven criteria has been addressed through careful planning, engineering, and commitment to community responsibility. Third, solar farm, so, is a, solar is a lost, long, low turn, low cost predictable and stable energy source. Projects like this contribute to energy independence and long-term reliability, helping keep energy costs manageable over time. And then fourth, the project promotes stewardship of land during its temporary use. By installing a use that's reversible and non-intrusive, the land can rest, regenerate, and ultimately return to agricultural production if the landowner chooses. Fifth, the project provides tremendous economic benefits to local taxing bodies, including schools and the county. The tax revenue generated is substantial, long-term, and predictable, which helps strengthen local services without demanding new expenses. And then finally, participating landowners themselves believe that this is the best use of their land. They see it as responsible, financially sound choice that supports their families and the broader community. In closing, the project meets or exceeds all requirements of the county's zoning ordinance and aligns with LaSalle County's standards for special use. We've designed this project with great care to ensure compatibility with the surrounding community and safety at every stage. As such, we respectfully request your vote for a positive recommendation to the county board for a special use permit. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. You ready for some questions? All right. Zoning Board, Council, questions, please?
So, like, how many homes are in this area that this is gonna cover?
It spans roughly twenty-one hundred acres, approximately. I don't have an exact number. We have twenty-one landowners that live in the area. Don't have the exact number of the number of homes, but given that there are twenty-one landowners, there is, there is likely to be somewhere around that number of homes, but I don't have the exact number.
Okay. It looked like there was a lot of this land is just land, it's not, there's no houses. But there would be quite a few there. And this covers, like, six sections?
Correct.
So, this solar is, we have wind towers there, too?
We do. Currently, the project is located within the existing Otter Creek Wind footprint.
Okay. I'm not familiar down there. I, that's down in the southwest corne, or east corner, so, a little on my area, but, so, like, are these solar gonna connect with these wind towers and their electric lines and everything?
They're gonna share many of the same facilities, including, I can go back just a couple of slides. Show that slide again. They're gonna share many of the same facilities, including the operation and maintenance facility, the, the three forty-five switching station, the gentile and transmission line, and the, the O and M building as well.
So, I'm guessing this is why you picked this location?
We picked this location for a variety of reasons, but yes, the locate, the location being within, a hundred percent within the Otter Creek Wind footprint was a reason for it, because it would, we knew that it would share many of the same components, which would reduce the creation of having to create another new operation and maintenance facilities or another substation. We also created it based on just the availability of, we did assessments on solar resource availability and to stand, determine that it was a viable location for solar that would, that would allow, allow for a viable solar project.
And then it was stated that this is a temporary use for twenty years, and is this gonna, like, can twenty years be extended, or?
Our, our leases currently are for thirty-year terms plus two ten-year extensions, so it's a temporary, it's a temporary use of the land for at least thirty years.
And then you had, like, the land and soil protected from what? Like, that it, you're not gonna till the ground, you're gonna have ground cover, but to protect the land by having a solar on top of it, that's protecting the land?
Yes, because it does allow the land to regenerate during that period of time that it's not in use. There will be ground cover, that'll be underneath the solar panels, and that, there's no tillage, as, you know, as it's stated in the, as I stated earlier. It's, there's minimal disturbance, and so it allows that, that, that period of time where it's not in, in production allows the land to regenerate.
And I know this was Reed Dixon that said this, but the drain tile. So, I know on our farm, once in a while, we gotta add more drain tile. Could you add drain tile to that if it was needed?
I'll let Rudy answer that question.
After the sites build, if there is an issue, drain tile, actually, additional drain tile could be installed.
With the panels on top of it? You go, you go down between the rows, or? I said, with the solar on top of it, you're gonna have to go down through the rolls, the rows, to get tile in there?
That's correct. You'd have to come off the closest main line and run vertically to either north-south or east-west, but predominantly north-south to get to whatever the wet area is.
And the only reason I ask that, 'cause usually it's, we're talking about a smaller solar. This is very large. I just don't know how exactly you'd be able to do that. If a storm came through, which one did down by Decatur, and that was a mess, you have people there to come and get that all fixed and get it running again?
We will be submitting a stormwater prevention and protection plan prior to obtaining the building permit. That'll outline all of the details in the event of, of, of a storm. So, that, that gets, that gets submitted just prior to the, prior to the building permit being issued, but we will make sure that we're in compliance with all county and state requirements as it relates to stormwater protection.
And like, on the market impact, I don't know that there's really any study that is out there that actually proves that it would impact or not, would or would not impact that. It is a lot of tax revenue that the taxing bodies would receive. But if you put a big subdivision out there, too, with some nice big houses, it could add up to that, too. You had about the traffic, you already have agreements with the townships, or you haven't talked to them yet?
We have been in discussions with the township and the county regarding a road use agreement. Conversations have been initiated.
And I don't remember, did it say that we had drainage districts in that area?
There, yes, there is drainage district in Allen Township impacting two parcels, but no improvement was found for those two particular parcels after discussions with Richard Burton.
And then on your public expense of Fire Department, you have talked with them, or that's a plan?
I can hear what you said.
The Fire Department, or like, a public expense?
We, we will be coordinating with the local fire district.
And with the health, safety, morals, general welfare, that's gonna be benefits to the business locally and to the residents, you said?
I'm just gonna go right back to that slide. Slide number seven. Yep. So, what I said, was that it adheres with the, with the county's comprehensive plan. It exceeds all, meets and exceeds all county ordinance requirements. Tax revenue benefits the residents of the county, and then we comply with all state and federal requirements.
And one last question. So, like, all these properties that you said, the property owners that own, do you have an idea, like, how many really live there or just own the property?
We, we know that there are several landowners that still reside, reside within the project boundary, and some that do not, and that some that, that come back and visit occasionally. I don't have the exact number of who still resides within the project boundary versus who, who still, who comes back and visits, or who just owns land in the area, but the landowners that are project participants have all decided that this was the best use of their land, and it allows them to keep their, their, their farmland that has been in their family for generations and still be able to generate income from it.
Thank you.
Deb, just as concerned with some of the safety questions you were asking in the application. On page eighteen, four point four is a safety program. Page nineteen is fire prevention, and on page thirty-two, there's six point one, point ten is emergency response plan and coordination, if that would help some of your concerns. Questions, CBA? Brad?
Is there gonna be battery storage on this?
There is, there is no plan, there are no plans currently to include battery storage at this particular site. It's not a part of our application to metal.
CBA questions? Go ahead, Larry.
I have a question, a couple of questions here regarding this. The, uh, in your amendment three, addendum three, you had listed, uh, change for the amount of acreage from 1940 to 2500?
Right, right, right.
Was that included in the lease score, that additional land?
The additional acre-
560 acres?
The additional acreage was included in the lease score, although the, the, I'll let Chris Massey speak to the, to the AMA amendment.
Uh, Chris Massey, the attorney, um, clarified that, um, that amendment was to the AMA with the Allen Department of Agriculture. Um, a parcel was added to the project after we submitted it to the Allen Department of Agriculture. The parcel was added before we submitted to, uh, this special use permit application. All I have to say, that parcel is included in the lease score. It was just, we submitted that, that, for that AMA much earlier before, uh, the application, so, yeah, does that answer the question, sir?
So that was done prior to this correction? The, the land was included prior to this correction that you have for addendum three?
Yes, as it relates to the, to the permit, sir.
And the, uh, another question on the status of the road agreements? Can you comment on that?
I'll, I'll also let Chris Massey speak to the status of the road agreements.
Uh, yes, sir. The road use agreement, um, is required before, uh, the construction permit, so we've done preliminary discussions, um, mainly with Don Ernnet, the county engineer, uh, just to discuss the route and, um, get the, the form agreement, and, um, kinda give him an overview of, you know, just generally solar is, has a much smaller impact on roads, uh, than wind. Just, it's a lot less weight coming across. We've also, uh, just had a preliminary, uh, call with Bill Burginson, the Allen Township, uh, Road Commissioner, um, and we, um, just to kind of inform him that we will be, uh, negotiating, uh, the road, the road use agreement ahead of the construction permit. And that, so that's the extent of work so far, sir.
Okay, and then I saw on here that the lifetime of the project could be up to 40 years, is that correct?
Um, the lifetime of the project, um, so our, our sol- solar leases, um, ha- the extended term, uh, period of time is 30-year term um, with two 10-year extensions, so 30-year term is, is the minimum amount of time that it'll be in production post, uh, commercial operations.
Yeah, I see it says 30 years, a lifetime with potentially 35 years as well, and it also adds a line in your page two of that, uh, second eye that anticipated life of the project is to be 40 years. Is that, is that correct, man?
I'll let Jeff Frankmeyer speak to that.
Yeah, uh, Jeff Frankmeyer, um, yeah, typically our projects in, internally for financing, we, we assume a 40-year life, you know, whenever, whenever we do it, so, so the, um, you know, the 40-year life would be what we would expect. Um, yeah, that, that said, yeah, then we're in the world of continuing energy demand. It, it's, it's not beyond the realm to, to work with our landowners to extend leases in the future and repower the site as well. But, but that's, uh, right now the project is, has been assumed for a 40-year life.
Thank you.
Yes, Gary.
What is the average life or expecting to see the life of the arrays? I mean, we're talking it's gonna be in there for 40, 50 years. How long do the arrays last?
Jeff will answer that question as well.
Yeah, they, they do last less than that, you know, we, but like any facility or any, any, uh, business, we're, we're always looking at upgrading equipment and, and replacing panels over time, you know, to, to extend the life, you know, similar to what I just mentioned on, on assumed life for the, the panel, the, the, uh, you know, that said, um, you know, the, the assumed degradation of panels over time has been assumed in that 40-year model.
How much of its electricity will be used in, in the area in LaSalle County?
Jeff would like to answer that question as well.
Yeah, um, the, uh, the, and I always have two answers to this, you know, electricity, you know, physically goes to ground as fast as it can, and, and if it, uh, you know, it, right, right now, we're interconnecting into a 345 KV substation, which puts it on the high voltage grid. Uh, you know, so, so it would be, as far as going to ground here quicker, it may not, you know, it's, it's on that higher voltage grid. You know, the, the eventual power purchase agreement counterparty, you know, would be buying the amount of electricity that we're putting on the grid, and that, that's how, that's how the revenue is generated.
Got a couple other ones here, on, um, on the map, uh, I was curious about where the transmission lines are placed in according to the arrays. Are they connected from one array to the other, so that more than one array is connected by the transmission lines, or each one have separate ones, or, or how is that?
I'm gonna, yeah, I'll allow Doug Zarnamski to answer that question, he's with our engineering team.
Yeah, basically-
Full name, please, sir.
Sorry?
Full name.
Doug Zarnamski.
Thank you.
Sorry. So, basically, the, uh, Collector Substation, uh, collects all the electricity from the arrays. There's half a dozen to a dozen feeders, um, emanating from the Collector Station at 35 KV that run to different areas of the, um, the arrays that, um, collect the power from the inverters, which convert the, um, DC power coming from the arrays, uh, to AC. So that's how it's pulled in, yep.
So, so like every different array then is gonna have its own transmission line, or they go together into a hub and then go to your collection substation?
Right, um, I'd say there's, off the top of my head, I think there's maybe six feeders. So they would go to, you know, different areas of the geographic, um, parcels to collect the power, yep.
Where the O and M maintenance building will be, as well as the substations, is that leased land, or is that purchased land? I, I can see a longer lent, uh, lon- longevity of that staying in operation, I just was curious how that was handled.
It's owned by Otter Creek Wind LLC. It's owned by Otter Creek Wind LLC, it's owned by Avangrid.
Okay. Is it land that's then owned by them, is that what you're saying?
Yes, it's, yes, exactly.
Um, can you explain what, uh, a good neighbor agreement is, and how are neighbors eligible for that?
Yes, a good neighbor agreement is a voluntary agreement that we enter into with landowners that are adjacent to the, to, to the project boundary. Um, so we offer them, um, um, you know, just a, and, just a goodwill incentive just for being located near the project, um, because we wanna maintain good relations with the members of the community.
I noticed that when, uh, in reading about, uh, implementing the arrays or putting the piles in, the, the land will be dressed or whatever, are you planning to flatten areas out and removing dirt to make it flat, or just wondered, I, 'cause I was reading the decommission, where you were saying you were gonna remove the trap, topsoil and then pull the piles out, and I just wondered what was going to be done to make the arrays all the same height?
Sure, so Carlos Guzman, who's on the, um, who's joining us virtually, is our, um, civil engineer for the, uh, project, and he can answer that question.
Okay.
Yes, hi everyone. Since the site and terrain is relatively flat, we don't expect that there will be any change in the heights. So the piles and panels will be relatively at the same height already.
That's it, thank you. Zoning board, additional questions? Yes, Larry?
Does your company operate the wind towers in that area?
Yes, um, Avangrid is an owner and operator of the wind, of the Otter Creek LLC wind farm.
And you are also asking for an additional two years to basically break ground?
Um, it's, yes, we're asking, we're requesting an additional two years for pre-construction activities, um, as a result of, uh, interconnection delays with, from PJM, our interconnection operator.
Zoning board, questions? Hearing none, county board members, questions? Arita, full name, please.
Arita Zinecki, I'm Leesville County Board, District 24, which- I'm Arita Zinecki from District 24, which covers the Allen Township, Otter Creek. My question is, you talk about having agreements with the county and Allen Township. Will those be finalized before you begin asking for your special use?
Well, we, they'll, they'll begin, oh, Chris Massey will, will answer that question.
Yeah, the road use agreement is a prerequisite to the constru- or the building permit, so it will not be in place before the special use permit in accordance with the, with the LaSalle County zoning orient- LaSalle County zoning ordinance. So, uh, just to clarify, those negoti- like those agreements are just in, um, preliminary discussions with, uh, mainly with the county at, at this point.
And my other question is, how many wind farms are in this area?
Uh, Jeff Frankmeyer will answer that question.
You talk about in Allen Township area, or in LaSalle County?
In Allen Township.
Uh, in, in the Allen Township area, you, you have the Otter Creek Wind Farm, uh, and, uh, the EDPR Top Crop Wind Farm, which is east, and then I believe part of, you know, part of the Invenergy Project Grand Ridge, you know, is to the north.
So this one that you're proposing, how many wind farms are going to have solar underneath them?
This is only, solely within the Otter Creek Wind Farm, so it would, it would only be within Otter Creek.
Okay, thank you.
County board, questions? Hearing none, staff, questions? Hearing none, members of the public, questions? This is the time for questions only, comments will be heard at a later part in the hearing. Is there anyone with a question? Yes ma'am, can you get by a microphone, please?
Madam Chairman?
If I could have your full name before you ask the question, please.
Yes, my full name is Pam Sorals. Uh, with the extra two years of land payments, uh, which I think by your presentation earlier said that was an additional $2 million per year, so that's $4 million, um, what is the intended price of electricity generated by the project with that change? Per kilowatt hour, please.
Well, Jeff would like to answer that question.
Yeah, note that the $2 million a year estimate is after, after we have, the project is, is, uh, in construction and in operation, so that, that is not, that occurring now. Currently, we are still in the development term with our, with our landowners.
Well, thank you, Jeff, but what is the price of the kilowatt hour produced by the project?
That is, that is a commercially sensitive thing, but I, I could tell you it's competitive, you know, we have, there are customers that, that do competitive solicitations for renewable energy, uh, and on the wholesale market, it's, it's competitive with natural gas, and, and, and actually, solar is, is reasonably competitive with wind as well.
So you cannot tell us what the electricity price will be?
That typically, typically if I told you that, our, our PPA counterparty would cease to be our PPA counterparty, they, that's usually a private, private agreement between us and our, and our counterparty.
Does PJM, uh, give you a dollar amount?
A dollar amount to put energy on the grid?
Yes.
No.
They don't have an allocation price for you?
We, it's, it's an open, it's a competitive market, you, and, and so you, you, you get basically do, you, you put in day-ahead bids, you know, for, for these things and, for power, and, and that's, but, uh, but it's, it's not, they don't set it, you know, they, basically, it's all competitive.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with a question? Members of the public? Yes, sir, full name, please.
Brian Barrows, can you hear me? Yeah, do you have a list of the current, um, contracts for the pinholders listed or leases?
Are you referring to the landowners that are leased for the project? We, we have the landowners that are leased for the, for the project, we know-
Can you produce mine? You have a copy of it?
It's in the, yes, it's in the applica- it's in the application narrative.
Can you show everyone here?
I believe it's public record.
'Cause I don't have one.
If, if I may, uh, there is a, um, there's another copy of the application right there, um, if you could hand it to the-
You have a signed contract from me in here? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that's a list of landowners that have signed con- that's a list of landowners that has a signed contract.
I have a signed contract?
I don't know.
You don't even know?
I don't, yeah.
'Cause I'm pretty sure I don't, and my parcel is listed. So how does that happen?
There were two exhibits within that application, there are adjacent, there's an adjacent landowner list, and then there's a participating landowner list.
So you just put me as an adjacent, but you have me listed on the certified letter?
Well, the certified letter went out to the community regardless of whether you were a participating landowner or not, if you're contiguous to the project-
You have me listed, where, where would it be at? Can we look at it?
It's under Tab A.
'Cause I don't have a signed contract with it. I don't know.
Yeah, Mr. Barrios, uh, it, it appears in talking with one of our land agents here that, uh, you, you actually purchased something from the Benton Housens, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, that, they were leased, and so, so the, the lease runs with the land?
The lease was set to expire, I have, uh, written here from Avangrid, saying that until I signed a new contract, that I wouldn't be involved in it.
That's, that's correct, you know, obviously, we always approach people about renewing, but that's, again, as, as with original leasing, it's a voluntary agreement.
Correct, I'd never sign a new one. I just want you to know that.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else with questions, or sir, did you have any other question?
How long has Aurora Solar been in business?
Aurora Solar is, is a hold, is a holding company for all of our solar developments, so, uh, it, mine, it's, it's probably since we started developing solar out west, uh, it would have to have been probably 15 to 20 years.
So no one who works for Aurora Solar has ever seen a project to completion?
Um, the project, they, they are, they are our development LLC. Whenever, whenever we move a project into construction, into, into, uh, operations, the, the assets for, for that project get transferred out of Aurora Solar into the project LLC. So, so, you know, this, this project would become Otter Creek Solar LLC, you know, at that, at that point, and, and the assets from Aurora get transferred over into that.
Has anyone from Aurora Solar seen the removal of a farm yet?
Solar is pretty new technology in the US, so we're, we're not to that point. Uh, as I, as I said earlier, um, much like with wind, there, you, there's people talking about and, and looking at the potential for repowering projects. There's always that potential, uh, you know, but, but if, uh, you know, if we elected not to repower, we do have obligations with the Ag Impact Mitigation Agreement and, you know, on, on, uh, on sureties and, and scope of work for removal of equipment, and there's also a protection that, that will be given to, to the county via decommissioning surety in the event that, that we would, that we would fail to achieve those obligations.
So no one's seen the end of it?
It's, again, it's new technology in, in US.
How much of it is subsidized?
How much of all energy is subsidized? You know, the, the, uh, you know, one person subsidies, another person's tax credit. Yeah, I'd say that, um, um, you know, every, every ener- Yeah, I'd say that, um, um, you know, every, every ener, energy generation resource out there has some type of assistance program.
Yes. How much of yours is subsidized?
We have, um, well, we, we're under, you, you have a couple of different options currently that are going to be, you know, that, that's starting to ramp down, you know, due to the new, new administration. You know, but, uh, currently, the production tax credit would be, you know, I guess, what? Like two, well, but it's, I'd have to go by, it's like, it's like 20 something cents a megawatt hour or something, it's, or $21 a megawatt hour. But, uh, you know, but it's, again, natural gas generation has, has a PTC, nuclear has a PTC. You know, so it's, it's not, it's not unique to renewables.
How much of yours is subsidized, though?
I, I just, what I just said, 22, 24.
You just cited examples of other subsidies.
Yeah, and I, and I said 22 to 24 dollars a megawatt hour.
Okay, how much acreage do you need to produce that?
To produce?
The kilowatt hours, that you just said.
Well, I mean, we, we're gonna be, you typically, I'm not sure I understand your question, I.
So you're telling me that 20, 20%?
No, 20, I, I was giving you a dollar figure per megawatt hour produced, yeah.
So 21 cents of every dollar? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm, I'm giving you a, a dollar figure per megawatt hour generated.
Okay, so how many acres does it take to produce that?
Um, how many acres does it take for, I mean?
To produce the amount that you just told me?
It's, it's, that's two different, you know, you, you, you would talk about the capacity, you know, of the project is what you would, what you use for acreage. So, so it's, and, and then since it's in, in a wind farm, it's a little above what you would, you know, what you'd normally see. You know, but it's, it's, you know, on, on the order of, you know, 10 acres per nameplate DC megawatt.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else with a question? Sir, can I have you get to a microphone, please? Okay, name, please, I'm sorry, I can't see you directly.
Lindsay Paul, Superintendent of Allen, Outer Creek District 65, the largest taxing body in this area for this project. Uh, my question is, do you have an estimated timeline if this project is approved to expect communication from Avangrid? As we've heard nothing yet to discuss potential change to the district's daily operation, such as you've men, uh, mentioned bus routes, uh, potential hazards outside. Uh, is there a timeline for expectation of any of those communications?
We are in the process of reaching out to several entities within, uh, within LaSalle County and, and Allen Township. Um, and we will be reaching out to the local school district as well to have discussions. I mean, all of that will occur prior to the building permit.
Thank you. Questions, members of the public? Yes, if I could have you get. Full name, please.
Robert Loftus is my name. Mine is a combination question. If there's a storm or a airplane falls out of the sky, does our payments continue?
Yes, your, your payments are, we're contractually obligated to continue to pay you your lease payments, development term payments, and then extended term payments.
So once it's commissioned and it hasn't interference, uh, if it stops produ, if they stop producing solar, we still get our, our payments?
Yes, you're, we're contractually obligated to pay you your, your payments.
Uh, last question is, with the government, if there's a change of attitude towards solar, does the subsidies have anything to do with our payments?
We believe that, um, that energy demand is here to stay and it's only increasing. And whether or not the subsidies are still available under the next, this administration or the next administration, we plan to continue forward with the project.
Thank you for your, your time.
Thank you. Questions? Members of the public, any?
Go ahead, sir.
Brian Barros again. You, you do have me listed as a landowner? I'm not listed as the adjacent?
Well, you're, as Jeff Frankmeyer mentioned previously, um, the contract that you, you purchased property from the Benton Housens.
Yes.
Right, um, that, that lease runs with the land, which is why you are.
Which ended in January of 2024.
The contract is, is still valid, the lease was never terminated.
Sir, we can have you correct that with the developers outside of the hearing. If that's, if that's agreeable with the developers.
It is, yes, it's a private negotiation.
Questions? Yes, sir, can you get by a microphone, please?
Chris Poldeck.
Thank you.
I had a question about, like, we were talking the natural disasters and all that. My question is, is like, the, uh, the panels themselves, like, I heard glass, aluminum, steel. What is, like, is there any chemicals that are inside the actual panels that are toxic? So if it were to get leached on the ground, you guys perform like a bio remediation of some sort? Or you just remove the top soil, or is there any kind of chemicals there within the panels themselves?
No, the panels are non-toxic, so any runoff, um, water from the panels would not result in any contaminants in the water, but I'll let.
So if the panels were to break in half, there's no sort of chemical inside of those?
The panels are non-toxic, but I'll allow Doug Zarnomski to answer additional questions.
Yeah, there, there's no contaminants coming off the panels, it's inert material. There's no leaching off of, uh, you know, the runoff off of the panels. It's, um, you know, polysilicone, um, glass, if you will, and aluminum frames. So, there's no issue with that.
And then the other question, I guess, is like with the fire department and that, how does, so that's gonna be solely on our fire department to take care of something that were to happen then? Or like right off the bat, like immediate fire or something like that?
The risk for fire with solar panels is, is very low. Um, we'll be coordinating with the local fire district, um, so that they're familiar with the equipment and that they're trained up, um, to respond in the events of an emergency.
I guess I wouldn't want to be on that fire department then.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Massey, I have a quick question for you. Are there, are you the correct person for him to contact regarding the contracts? Or is there someone else that we should put him in contact with?
Yeah, we're, I think the Avangrid team is gonna have their land agent talk to him in this meeting. Or, excuse me, after this meeting.
That would be great.
So somebody else will, yep.
All right. Sir, don't leave without them getting ahold of you then.
I can give you my, my business card and we can talk about it.
Arita, you have a question?
Arita Zinecki, county board. Talking about good neighbors, do you have all of those contracts in place?
We have, we have some good neighbor agreements in place. And, you know, the, it's been off, it was offered previously to all neighbors that were contiguous to the property boundary, although not everyone elected to sign a good neighbor agreement, but the offer was made.
And when is the deadline that they could hop on board for that?
There, there's no deadline specifically, like, we offered good neighbor agreements several years ago, which not every contiguous landowner took advantage of. If there is some, a, a landowner that's adjacent to the property that's still interested in a good neighbor agreement, we can have discussions. But, um, there's no, there's no formal deadline.
And this is a monetary amount that's offered to them on a yearly basis?
There is a monetary amount that's offered.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Brian Barros again. Do you believe purchasing a home in the center of a solar farm would be profitable for you? It would not lower your home value?
Yeah, so we've got Mike Marousse in the room that can speak to the report that he, um, submitted on behalf of, of Avangrid for the application.
Uh, Michael Marousse, Marousse and Company, uh, Park Ridge, Illinois. So I did prepare a property value impact report that was specific, uh, to this proposed development. And it has, uh, been done, over 100 pages and looked at the area, familiar with the county, with the, uh, the development. And, uh, the situation really has to do with the economic impact. And you heard about the payments to the property owners, you heard about the economic, uh, to the taxing bodies and the fact that there's basically no stress on the infrastructure, but a positive input of about a million dollars a year. Then, in our report, we go through what's called matched pairs, looking at similar situations. And a key is really setbacks. And the state setback is 150 feet, uh, from the edge of an array to a residence. And, and the situation, it appears to be significantly more than that. That is the key. Further, I've interviewed probably over now 120 assessors in the Midwest that actually have real live experience with established solar farms to see, uh, have there been any tax appeals? Have they had any evidence of property value impact? Uh, and how are they assessing properties that are in a, a solar farm? The answer is there's been no successful, uh, appeals. And this is talking about over a million acres of land, thousands of residential properties. Uh, they've heard concern because of the change, the new use. And once they have hard data, they do investigations, they found no negative impact on value, actually because of the positive pop in the infrastructure. It's been a positive situation. The next, uh, I've also provided, uh, articles, peer reviewed articles and analyzed in the report. And there's concern in, let's say, suburban, urban areas with proximity and density. But it's consistently found in rural areas, there's been no indication, uh, of negative impact. And that is classified generally as 850 people per square mile. This area has under 20. So, and those are listed, uh, in my report. The Appraisal Institute and the Appraisal Journal just had a report that came out. It was a published article two weeks ago. Similar conclusion actually found positive impact of about 3% in studying, uh, active solar farms. And where they were, uh, somewhat surprised because they get negative feedback from people that have concern and they found actual data, uh, supported, uh, data. I also was presented by, uh, one of the county, uh, members, uh, an article just this morning that I took a look at. And, uh, it's interesting there that, uh, right in number point one, 1.3, our distance, uh, decay analysis suggests that the overall impact on large lot home price is close to zero and statistically insignificant for all nearby, uh, proximity homes. In my opinion, uh, this is just going to be another part of the agricultural community. And it's gonna provide stability, economic impact and certainty. So, in my opinion, there'll be no negative impact and probably it's gonna be a benefit for the township and the county overall.
So do you live on a solar farm?
Sir, that's not relative to this hearing.
Well, would he purchase a home that's surrounded by a solar farm?
Sir, that's not relative either to this hearing. He has answered your question. Do you have anything else?
That was it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else with a question, please? Yes, Deb.
Um, are these panels made in the U.S.?
We don't have a manufacturer sup, uh, um, selected yet. I mean, we're, the project is not, I mean, not planned to have the, at commercial operations date until at least 2029. So we don't have the supplier selected yet.
And then, um, I had a question on this lady over here, Pam, about the 2 million or whatever that you would get. And I know you wouldn't get the money until the assessment's on and you start paying your taxes. But for two years, there's gonna be wear and tear on these roads. And I'm sure they're, I'm not sure, I don't know, but their road district, if they're gonna have the funds to fix anything, if they have to, is there funds given to the township ahead of time to fix this or the county?
I'll let Jeff Frankmeyer ask, answer that question.
Yeah, so to clarify, are you talking about the two years between now and when we start construction? We're not gonna be doing much traffic on the roads during that time. You know, the road agreement covers the construction and then the warranty period after construction of the project. And, and as we've mentioned, we, we're, you know, we, we're obligated, you know, to, to enter into road agreements with, you know, with the county and the township, you know, prior to getting our building permit. So, you know, and we can't start construction of the project till we get a building permit. So when we, when we get the building permit, we'll have a road agreement. And at that point, the road agreement outlines our obligations on repairing the roads during construction and our obligations on, on repairing the county road, or the township and county roads after construction. And then, then providing assured, a surety on, to cover, cover any kind of warranty items for a period of time after that.
Questions, please? Vicki.
Vicki Heath, LaSalle County Soil and Water. Uh, correct me, Sandy, if I can ask this question or not. I've noticed that there are about 11 turbines within this solar array. Those turbines have a lifespan where they potentially could wear out, need to be worked on, et cetera. Could you explain to the group here tonight how those would be either decommissioned within the solar array? If the solar array would be removed in part to potentially drop those turbines and put up new ones? Or will that be an issue?
You wanna answer that, Jeff?
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, Vicki, um, we, when we cite the, cite the solar project complimentary to the wind project, we take that into account. You know, that's part of why you see more land leased, you know, in, inside of an operating wind farm than you would on a standalone solar project is because you need that additional space and that additional access. You have to be able to ma, maintain both simultaneously.
Any other questions? Yes, Gary.
For this project, how many panels do you, um, estimate will be put into service?
I believe we estimate around 390,000 panels. But Doug Zarnomski can answer any additional questions related to that.
I don't have a figure off the top of my head, but thousands of panels.
Yeah, we have a similarly sized project in, in Ohio that, that had roughly the same number that, that Sheena's mentioning. It's in the ballpark of 400,000 panels type, so.
In the application, we said approximately 296,660. It's, it's an estimate based on, oh, sorry, Jessica Sutter.
Thank you.
Sorry. Um, but it's, it's an estimate at this point until engineering's, design is final.
Yes, name, please.
Hi there, Ryan Woodman. Uh, I was hoping to find out the, in proportion to a windmill, takes up about a half of an acre of property. So you're gonna take up 2,000 acres of actual good quality farm ground and produce how much more power in proportion to that windmill taking up a half an acre versus 2,000 acres?
Yeah, so the project is located within the Outer Creek Wind footprint. And so the pan, the, the panels will be setback according to LaSalle County setback requirements. We anticipate that out of the 2,100 acres that we have leased, that approximately 800 to 1,200 will be utilized for the project. And that includes the setback requirements as well.
So the efficiency, I guess, of the solar panels taking up 2,000 acres versus one windmill taking up a half an acre, I guess, is what I was looking for the answer for. And then also a side note to, do, does the landowner, if he got a windmill on that, does he get an additional? He's getting additional money generated from the additional acreage that they put in? So he'll be receiving two payments from Avangrid?
Yeah, they're two separate contracts. So if the landowner who has a wind contract is also elected to lease, uh, his land for a solar project, that's a separate contract.
So do you have the, the statistics to say that the half acre of a windmill produces, you know, two megawatts or whatever? And then versus 2,000 acres or, or say even 10 acres or 80 acres? What is the comparison of how many solar panels it takes to equal what a windmill would in comparison for the acreage that is lost?
I'll have Jeff Frankmeyer.
Yeah, so if you, if you, uh, take a look at what's actually utilized for panels and not buffer area, that, that. buffer area, that could be, that actually, in, in some areas in Ohio, people are electing to farm in our buffer areas. But if you look at the actual areas inside the fence, you know, as Sheena mentioned, you know, 800 to 800, 900 acres, you know, take that divided by five, you know, or take that divided by 150, you know, and, and that gives you a rough number. It's like, so it's, it's anywhere like seven, six, seven acres per, per nameplate, or per, per interconnect capacity megawatt.
And that would compare to one? And that would compare to what one windmill would take up or produce?
Well, it's one megawatt.
One megawatt?
Yeah, one megawatt. Yep.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Dana Snook, and I have a question that was referenced earlier, but it didn't exactly address my specific question. It was regarding the chemicals. My specific question is, are there any heavy metals inside of the panels that could potentially be released if there was a catastrophic event?
The short answer is no, but I will have Doug Zarnamsky speak more to that, or Carlos Guzman.
Yeah, the, there's, there's no contaminants in the, in the panels themselves. If there was a catastrophic event, you would have, well, an emergency response plan to address the, the issue, whatever it may have been, a storm or, or what have you, to contain any, you know, breakage and pieces that are coming down off of the structures in a safe manner.
Okay, thank you. And furthermore, if there were a catastrophic event, all the glass, if this glass was shattered on the tillable acreage, who is responsible for cleaning up the shattered glass? And would the project be decommissioned prior to the cleanup?
In the event of a catastrophic event where there is shattered glass, I mean, Avengrid is the owner and operator and is responsible for maintaining the site. So, Avengrid would be responsible for the cleanup.
Is that in the contract?
Okay. We're responsible per the, yeah, so it's, we have clauses in our contract that pertain to maintenance and decommissioning. Chris can speak more to whether or not that's also included in the AMA or not.
Yeah, the two separate requirements here, the, we submitted a decommissioning plan as is required under the AMA. So, Avengrid is responsible for, you know, for decommissioning the project, taking everything down and restoring the land to how it was before. They have to post a bond with the county, third-party bond, or it could be a letter of credit or something, third-party. So, if the entity went away, the county would have the funds to pay for decommissioning. Then, separate issue, if something happens during the life cycle of the project, maybe someone on the Avengrid team could speak more to the leases, but they are certainly required and have the responsibility for cleaning up the project. And, you know, and maybe another way to look at it was they would want to get their, get their project back up and running again, because that's how they are paid the money.
One more question. Do you have any information regarding changes in weather patterns in surrounding farmland once the solar farm has been established?
You want to take that, Jeff?
Yeah, I've heard no, no credible studies that talk about that. You know, there's, in both wind and solar, I've heard no credible stories about that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Yes, sir.
Yes, Dennis Bergerson, Allen Township resident. Is there a reason why we're picking on prime farm ground to put up all these solar panels? There's a lot of construction of solar panels in the area right now, and farm ground is not renewable, actually. It's all, all we've got.
Okay. Right. So, when we selected this location for a solar project, we ran a solar assessment based on the historical solar patterns in the area and determined that this was a viable location for a solar project based on that. We also looked at the, the proximity to the interconnection grid and transmission lines and determined that that was also, the proximity to that also made it a viable location for it. We looked at the topography and the soil and determined that it was, the land was suitable for a solar project. So, just based on that criteria, and we determined that this was a good location, and the community interest from the landowners that have determined that this is also like the best use of their land played a big role into why we, we selected this area for a solar farm.
Is the land suitable because it's less work to build your solar farm, sir?
Well, we want to, we minimal, we want to have as minimal land disturbance as possible. So, we're not, you know, no tillage, no grading. You know, we looked at, looked at areas that were flat and agricultural so that we wouldn't be disturbing, minimal disturbance of the land.
Okay.
Hearing none. Brian, has anyone other than the petitioner submitted relevant documented evidence and testimony to your office 24 hours prior to this hearing?
Yes, there is. So, we had seven letters of support for the project, or emails and communications. One, two, three, four, four, four communications and opposition.
Are those more comments?
Yes, they would like to be comments, so.
Okay, so now.
And then, there was one submitted of evidence with, with, that they want to testify.
Okay, and that's who we need to hear now, the Sorrels?
Yes.
Okay. Ma'am, you're good for right now? And you will have a chance, the petitioner will for rebuttal.
Can the Poldex hear me back there?
Can we have your name again, please, ma'am?
Yes, it's Pamela Sorrels.
Thank you.
And my neighbors over here, can you also hear me? Okay, great. Well, good evening. My name is Pam Sorrels. I'm a chemical engineer turned first-generation farmer. I took a large pay cut to farm, but being in the beauty of uninterrupted prairie with open sky is part of my compensation, and the very reason I live in rural LaSalle County. We've spent the last nine years and an embarrassing sum of money rescuing our 1907 farmhouse from ruin to preserve a piece of LaSalle County history, a history that is rooted and always has been rooted in agriculture. I reside in Section 29 of Allen Township. The proposed project will border the entire eastern side of my property, as well as the entire 160-acre parcel directly across the road from my home on the western horizon. And for the board, zoning board members, you might see the pictures, some that I've taken from the, myself of our western view and the eastern view, as well as the proposed view from Aurora Solar. The surrounding landscape is part of our farm's appeal to customers who come directly to our farm to purchase products.
Ma'am, I, I hate to interrupt, but is this more commentary? Normally, this is the part of the, where you present documented evidence.
Yes, I'm getting to that, if I may continue.
If, yes, as long as you leave the commentary for public comment.
Sure. If this special use is approved, I will no longer be able to implement my plans of hosting sunset, farm-to-table dinners, and other farm agritourism events. Because who would want to go to a dinner surrounded by chain-link fence? Aurora Solar would like you to believe that the solar farm would increase our residential property value. As a decade-long cattle farmer, I can identify bull when I see it. The study they present was paid for by Aurora Solar.
Ma'am, I'm, I'm sorry, ma'am, I'm sorry to keep interrupting you, but I was under the assumption that you were going to be presenting documented evidence regarding to housing.
Yes, that's correct.
If we can get to that and leave this for public comment.
Okay. The largest and latest USDA-sponsored unbiased study regarding the negative financial property impact of large-scale solar farms was published April of this year, and you do have a copy of it in the evidence folder, if you would like to take a look at it. I've also made a note of what I'm about to tell you. This study was published not by a realtor, but by Chen Yang Hiu, a postdoc research associate at the Center for Agricultural Trade in the Department of Ag and Applied Economics at Virginia Tech. Hiu and his team used statistical analysis from over 8.8 million real estate transactions to conduct, to conclude that even without a view of the solar farm, being within a half-mile proximity of a large-scale solar farm reduces the residential sales price up to 7.2%. However, homes like mine that will have large-scale solar farms in the view shed of the home, as is in the intent of this project, incur slightly more negative home value effect up to 7.9% within a half-mile. Hiu found the effects were up to three miles in proximity of the solar farm, which you can read in the study that's presented to you. For me and my home, that's an undeserved economic hit of approximately $70,000. This project's personally devastating to our farm business and the enjoyment of the home and farm we worked hard to restore. From our farm's Facebook page, we created a poll to determine sentiment regarding solar farms. We asked, if you were buying a house in a rural area, how likely would you choose a property with large-scale solar views on multiple sides of the property? 200 people responded by the time I prepared these remarks. 88% of those surveyed said they would not even consider purchasing the property.
Okay, ma'am, we're getting into commentary again. If I can, are you done with all of your documented evidence regarding property values?
That's all for property values. We can talk about the farmers next.
Well, we can do that during public comment.
Okay, so I can come back?
Well, of course you can for public comment. No, if you could stay there, please, you did exactly what I needed by presenting your documented evidence on property values. Now, the zoning board would be able to ask you some questions regarding.
Sure.
Zoning board, do you have questions for Pamela? Nope. Hearing none. County board members? Hearing none. Staff questions? Members of the, or I'm sorry, petitioner, do you have questions regarding the property value presentation?
We have no questions.
Thank you. Okay, ma'am, you can sit down for now, and we'll have you back for public comment.
I have additional evidence as well for other items that I have presented.
It's documented?
Yes.
If I could, please, go ahead then.
Okay. Um, the next, the next piece of evidence you'll see in the folder is a spreadsheet of, there we go, the very last one, and also some information from the agricultural census. So, not that one unless you want to do the math that I've already done on the spreadsheet, which you have right in front of you. Let's talk about the community's grain farmers. With the average farm of 375 acres, the farm ground in question tonight risked putting five local farmers out of business, according to the evidence there in the USDA census for LaSalle County. Please note that a large part of the acreages leased not owned by farmers. Many farmers rely on the quantity of leased ground to fund and justify high capital cost of their tractors, combines, and trucking equipment. The local economy of ransom is driven by farming. If, in the evidence in front of you, you'll see that there is an estimated $650 per acre of funds changing hands to support farming operations. For the farm ground in question, this results in $1.3 million of money from farmers spent in our community. This goes to the ransom grain elevator. This goes to ransom fertilizer sales. This goes to all the hired hands and truck drivers that help get this crop to the grain elevators. The loss of farm ground also increases the cash rent due to supply and demand affecting the bottom line of additional area farmers. Finally, and the evidence is shown that you are looking at with your spreadsheet, the grain that is produced on the farm ground in question tonight feeds the chickens, pigs, and commercial cattle that feed over 15,000 people annually, which is one out of every eight citizens of LaSalle County. Taking prime, prime ground out of production is irresponsible for future generations. I do not wish to live my remaining years in a rural area with solar farm views and have my property degraded by them. Thank you for your time, and I, please ask that you vote against the special use.
Ma'am, would you stay just a moment? I'm going to see if anyone has any questions on your documentation on farm production expenses. Zoning board questions? Hearing none. County board member, not present. Staff questions? Petitioner, do you have a question on this testimony?
We do not.
All right, ma'am, thank you. You did a lot of work.
Thank you.
Petitioner, is there any rebuttal evidence and testimony that you'd like to present regarding anything that was just presented by Pamela Sorrels?
Yes, ma'am. We'll have the, Mike Marousse just briefly talk on the property, the property value.
Thank you.
Michael Marousse, again. First of all, in my report, I had peer-reviewed studies that were not paid for by a development group and actually had more valuation experience than the one study you heard about. Second of all, that study, which you were provided with, I think today, I discussed about 10 minutes ago, that specifically excludes large-lot rural-type residential development. The third issue in looking at the sorrel farm is around the house itself, there's what we call a view shield in almost all directions, which basically blocks a lot of view from the house. Obviously, if you're going to put tables at the street, it's going to be a little different. The third issue is by state mandate, the setback is 150 feet. On one elevation, the proximity, I think, is 500 feet, and the other elevation is 1,000 feet. So, you're talking over three times on the one elevation, six times on the other. And speaking of property value impact, you know, you've got a very active farm use that in many situations, many potential residential users might find that less than optimum and less than desirable. It goes to taste just as taste with other uses in your area, so. And, but the other peer-reviewed reports are in my submitted document, the Appraisal Institute article, which I said just came out two weeks ago, I can provide as a supplement, which, again, that did a nationwide study and went specifically to three active farms and found, in large-scale solar farms, and found actually increases in property value.
Thank you, Michael. I'll see if there are any questions for you. Zoning board questions? County board, not present. Staff? Hearing none. Members of the public, questions for Michael? Hearing none. Is there anyone present other than the petitioner who would like to provide relevant public comment on this petition? In doing so, those who respond, I ask that comments do not become repetitive. If it's already been said, if someone has said what you want to say, please don't repeat it. I have no problem with you standing up and saying, yes, I agree, but we don't have to hear the same things over and over. You have a very experienced zoning board, and they will hear it the first time. Each speaker will be given one opportunity to speak and will be limited to five minutes. Do I have anyone who'd like to make a public comment? Hearing none. Brian, has correspondence offering written public comment to this petition been received?
There has. As I outlined before, we had several letters of support, which I believe.
Oh, sorry. Yes, there was additional correspondence received in both email and mail form. So, we do have several letters of support and several in opposition. I believe that some of them were provided from the developer, from some landowners, so maybe they could, you know, they've been provided with all of them in support if they'd like to come up and, and talk about those. And then, I could either read word for word or try to- And then I could either, uh, read word for word or try to paraphrase the, the opposition, uh, ones.
Okay, I have no problem with paraphrasing since they will be entered in their entirety into that evidence. All right, Serge, yes. Wherever you're more comfortable.
Again, Chris Massey, attorney for Avangrid Power. Um, I'll quickly paraphr- paraphrase the letters we received in support. Uh, the first one is from, uh, John Van Kurenz. Um, he's writing it with strong support to the Otter Creek Solar Farm. His family has deep roots in the Streeter area. Um, he talks about how his great, great-grandparents owned the farm and lists, um, a variety of good things for the community. Powering 2,700 homes annually, creation of new jobs, increased investment, um, you know, reduced reliance on other power sources, um, soil health, and, uh, reliable su- source of energy for generations to come. The next letter is, um, from a Steve Yam, um, also writing in support. He's a fourth-generation landowner, uh, in the area. Um, he lists, uh, a few items that, that this project will provide, uh, long-term diversification of a tax base, um, guaranteed revenue stream from the local community through taxes, uh, especially for schools, roads, and other extended services, um, help towards energy independence, um, and, uh, increased local investment. Uh, the next one is for the trustee of the RGG Trust, um, also writing in support. Honestly, this is, it's pretty repetitive of the, the first, uh, the letter right before that, so I won't repeat that. The next letter is from Austin Martin, um, uh, letter of strong support. He says that his, him and his brothers have been working with Avangrid for five years and have them, found them to be very responsible and responsive to any requests or concerns as regard to the solar leases or the winterments on their farms. They've always paid their lease fees on time with the correct amount and have good communication. He goes on to list, uh, a variety of, um, you know, benefits to the local community. Maybe, uh, one difference from the, the, the letters before is he says that this would really help with his farming operation, um, to offset, um, you know, uh, volatility in the grain market. The next letter is from Axel Swanson. He's a trustee for the Kenneth and Marilyn Swanson Trust. Um, he's voicing support for the project. Um, he said he grew up and lived on the family farm. Um, I assume the farm is leasing here for the past, uh, 36 years. Uh, you'll generate a large amount of tax revenue for the ransom school district, the Streeter High School, IBCC, all of which he's alumni, and would like to see them get additional money. Um, and he also indicates that this will, um, serve as a good, um, um, income stream, uh, to help with the volatility in the farming market. The last letter, uh, is from Bobby and Marlene Bettenhausen. Um, you know, they indicate they have very strong, uh, connections to the community. Um, they, they say that, uh, they worked for, yeah, her husband worked for 60 years, um, milking cows, um, and have received little financial benefit. And, um, in return, they see this, uh, this lease as a way, um, to, uh, enjoy their retirement and get additional, uh, because they're getting additional money, um, for that land, um, a retirement that they couldn't, uh, enjoy at the same level without this, this money. That's all the letters I had. I think, Brian, you mentioned seven letters. I might have missed an email. Six, I had six. Oh, gee. So I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. You had one, Brian?
Uh, sure. So, uh, I have, uh, two emails and a letter that I received, uh, in opposition. Uh, the first one from Diane and James Watts. Um, they'd like to voice their opposition to destroying good farm ground. The second one's from, uh, Robert Gackey. Um, they're voicing opposition, uh, in that, uh, they don't need more industrialization, industrialization of farmland. And that, uh, it can already be integrated into residential areas, rooftops, et cetera. And will just, uh, basically take up farmland and, um, so that's, that's that one. Uh, the next one's from Julie Slus- Slusker- Sluserski. Um, is a homeowner in ransom at Allen Township. Uh, they do not want to see approval of the Otter Creek Solar Farm project. Uh, it will take vital farm and grazing land, diminish land at home values, and be an eyesore. Um, and they believe there'll be negative long-term impacts. Uh, and the fourth one's from Jason Sorrels. I don't know if you want me to paraphrase this, or do you wanna read it? Oh, okay.
All right, Jason could not be here tonight. He's watching our toddler, but, um, uh, my name is Jason Sorrels. I live in section 29. The proposed project is planned to install solar panels bordering our west and east, which would be visible from 30 windows of our home. We spent considerable time and money adding front porch to view the western sunsets, which will be obstructed by solar panels. The proposed project will employ only one person, according to Aurora Solar, uh, permanently, while removing an estimated $1.7 million worth of corn and soybeans out of the local economy annually. It will negatively impact local ag companies like Grain Co. FS, um, and the local ransom grain elevator. The majority of the landowners do not live in our area, nor do they spend money here. The loss of spending in our economy based on this project will negatively affect an already economically depressed area. Solar panels installed in Illinois, according to the Department of Energy, are approximately 17.5% efficient, making it the worst choice for renewable energy. If they are to be installed, why not install them in areas such as the Livingston County dump, inside local sand pits, or abandoned shopping center parking lots instead of prime farm ground? Land is being taken across the country to install solar farms. At what point in time will the food supply be impacted for every American? The energy they do create will be used to supply massive data centers, which was also put in Avangrid's, um, presentation, uh, with power, which are being created for, to fuel the AI economy to put everyday Americans out of jobs. I do not want to view solar farms, nor do many potential buyers who want to move to the country for the wide-open rural setting. If we can't sell our home because of the solar fields, who will be held responsible? Suing a newly-created LLC named Aurora Solar, created by Avangrid Renewables, so that they would not have, they would have limited liability in any possible litigation, won't work. They've told us they'd like to be good neighbors but have zero obligation to financially compensate any homeowners in the area. They offered us $500. Does this project have a negative impact on me and my family? Yes. Does this project have a negative impact on our local economy? Yes. Please vote against the special use.
Thank you. Brian, is that everything?
That's everything I received.
Thank you. Petitioner, a closing statement?
Uh, if we may, uh, can we have a brief recess to confer, uh, before the closing statement?
Before your closing statement?
Is that okay?
Yes, 10 minutes.
10 minutes?
10 minutes, everyone. It will be live. The cameras do not stop, and neither do the recording of voices, just so you know.
I know, right? I'm gonna have to work another two years in labor, all that. Yeah, I'm sure. I'm sure. I probably stick to the older.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Petitioner, are you ready for your closing statements?
I am.
All right, please go ahead.
Members? Members of the zoning board of appeals, I want to thank you for your time tonight.
Can you speak up just a little bit more, please?
I'd like to take, thank everyone here for their time tonight. As we conclude, I once again want to briefly summarize why this is an excellent fit for this community. First, the project adheres to the, all of the zoning requirements of LaSalle County, of the LaSalle County zoning ordinance. Secondly, as I outlined in the presentation, we believe that this project conforms to the standards for special use. Each of the seven criteria has been addressed through careful planning, engineering, and commitment to the projects, or to the community responsibility. Third, solar energy is a low-cost, predictable, stable energy source, and projects like this contribute to energy independence. Third, solar energy is a low-cost, predictable, stable energy source, and projects like this contribute to energy independence. Fourth, the project promotes land stewardship during its operation as temporary use. By installing a use that is reversible and non-intrusive, the land can rest, regenerate, and ultimately return to agricultural use if desired. And then fifth, as mentioned previously, this project will provide tremendous economic benefits to the community. And then finally, the participating landowners themselves believe that this is the best use of their land. They see this as a responsible, financially sound choice for both their families and the broader community. So for that reason, we respectfully request your vote for a positive recommendation to the county board for a special use permit. Once again, thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Brian, to the best of your knowledge, is the application as presented in compliance with the standards and conditions imposed on the Illinois State Act, LaSalle County zoning ordinance adapted consistent with this code and the conditions imposed under state and federal statutes and regulations?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Zoning Board, ready for the finding of fact? The zoning board of appeals shall not recommend that a special use be granted as part of this ordinance unless it shall make findings based upon the evidence presented to it in each specific case demonstrating consideration with respect to the following. Section 14.10-5 Standards for Special Uses A, that the granting of any special use is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the ordinance, it will not be injurious to the neighborhood, detrimental to the public welfare, or in conflict with the county's comprehensive plan for development, and specifically that the granting of the special use will not impair an adequate supply of light and air to adjacent property. Lane?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Blankenship?
Yes.
Langston?
Yes.
Seville?
Yes.
Will not increase the hazard from fire or other dangers to said property. Lane?
No.
Lewis?
No.
Blankenship?
No.
Langston?
No.
Seville?
No.
Will not diminish the value of land and buildings in the vicinity of the proposed special use. Lane?
No.
Lewis?
Yes.
Blankenship?
No.
Langston?
Yes.
Seville?
No.
Will not unduly increase traffic congestion in the public streets and highways. Lane?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Blankenship?
Yes.
Langston?
Yes.
Seville?
Yes.
Will not increase the potential for flood damages to adjacent property. Lane?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Blankenship?
Yes.
Langston?
Yes.
Seville?
Yes.
Will not incur additional public expense for fire protection, rescue, or relief. Lane?
No.
Lewis?
Yes.
Blankenship?
No.
Langston?
Yes.
Seville?
No.
Will not otherwise impair the public health, safety, comfort, morals, or general welfare of the inhabitants of LaSalle County, nor will it otherwise create a nuisance. Lane?
No.
Lewis?
No.
Blankenship?
No.
Langston?
No.
Seville?
No.
After hearing the evidence and testimony presented and completing the finding of fact, is there a motion for a recommendation to the county board for the petition to be approved?
Yes.
Larry, thank you. May I have a second, please? Larry? Questions, comments, conditions? Brian, you had some conditions that you'd like the board to consider?
Yes, three. These are conditions we've had in previous ones. Number one, the petitioner shall follow all Illinois Department of Natural Resources and LaSalle County Soil and Water Conservation District recommendations. Two, the petitioner shall provide vegetative maintenance and weed control within the lease area inside or outside the fence line and adjacent to the road right-of-way. And three, the petitioner shall be responsible for vegetative maintenance and weed control during the entirety of construction. If necessary, a cover crop shall be put in place between harvest and start of construction.
Thank you. Board, is there anything you'd like to add to those conditions? Any questions concerning those conditions? You have a question on your face, Larry?
I'm sorry, I didn't get what you said, I'm sorry.
You have a question?
A condition?
Yes, on the conditions, or like to add one, or?
Yes. The applicant has asked for an additional two years, and I am not in favor of that. I don't think we can do something special for one applicant and not every other. So I would recommend, my condition would be that the standard two-year condition applies.
Brian, do you have any comment on that?
Actually, I mean, you just wouldn't, I think if you were to give them the, like, the four years, that'd be a condition. But otherwise, it just revert to what we have in our ordinance, which is two years. But if you make, you know, get necessary state permits or show other progress toward your permit, and we've, in the past, accepted, like, a completed AMA or interconnect agreement as progress, you know, for a start. So in that case, you know, we would do the same with them.
What do you think?
I understand what you're saying, and that would be moving towards the goal.
Correct, yeah, yeah. So, I mean, they can't just, I mean, if they sat on it and did nothing for two years, then, you know, and didn't have any progress, then, you know, we, it would expire.
That's what I'm saying should happen here, that's what I'm...
But that's what Brian's saying...
I'm saying you don't have to add a condition for that, though.
Well, are they asking for a four-year?
Well, they asked for it, but I think if we, if we were to be altered from what the ordinance is, you'd have to add that as a condition that we're allowing them, you know, a four-year...
They would have to come back and ask for the second two years, is what you're saying.
I think you'd have to put the four years in the petition, or in the, as a condition on the special use. Because it's different than what the ordinance says.
The ordinance says two years.
Correct.
And what does the application say?
I don't know if it's in the application or not. I mean, I guess we could specify it in a condition that it shall meet the regular expiration requirements. Yeah, we could just state that it needs to meet the, that section. Section.
The ordinance says that the permit should, or the special use would be a two-year period with the ability to seek extensions. That's not binding on the county board and their decision. If you, the decision made here tonight is to grant the special use permit recommended to the board with a condition that they consider a four-year term, I think you can do that. If they, if that's not a condition, then it would be put before them as a, as a two-year, but that's not binding on that. The petition can still be granted at whatever term the board wants to do when it goes before them, if they can, if they grant it. That's my take on, on the way the ordinance is written.
We have had other applicants come back and ask for extensions.
Yeah, they can come back. There's a $300 extension fee for a, for a year extension without an additional hearing.
So do we even have to address it? If the ordinance says two years, as long as the applicant knows that if, that there is cause for an extension, they can come here and, uh?
I think Jeremiah and I are in agreement with the fact that it wouldn't need the, the condition unless you wanted to make it, recommend four years instead of the two.
So if you want to recommend, that would be a condition. If you want to leave it at the two-year, we don't have to do anything because it's part of the ordinance. Is that what I'm hearing? Is everyone okay with that? Any other questions? Any other conditions? Any questions, Jeremiah? All right. Then I would need a motion to amend with the conditions as read. Gary?
So move to amend.
Thank you. A second, please.
Oh, second.
Thank you. Any addition, any additional questions or comments? This vote is a motion to amend with conditions. Lane?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Blankenship?
Yes.
Langston?
Yes.
Seville?
Yes.
Now we'll vote on the original motion with the amendments. Lane?
No.
Lewis?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Blankenship?
No.
Langston?
Yes.
Seville?
No.
That is three noes and two yeses. The motion to approve has failed. The date of the petition will go to the county board. Brian?
This will go to the county board on December 8th.
Thank you. Thank you. We do have some zoning board items on the agenda. You all are welcome to stay and listen to us do our business, or you can leave at your leisure. Vicki, you have something for us tonight?
I do. So in front of you, you have revised Lisa.
I was hoping that...
Just wait, okay.
Just wait, I was hoping, yeah.
All right, I'll make it quick. I know I've been promising you guys a revised Lisa for a few months now. And during the shutdown, I had some time at home that I could kind of dabble with it. So I re-formatted it with the same information, so it looks pretty different. What I want you guys to do, we don't necessarily have to make any motions or changes tonight, but I want you guys to take this home, look at it. The descriptions may be a little bit different, just wording-wise, but they say the same things. The one that I did want to point out that is always an issue, especially in something like tonight, is that public sewer and water. I added on this that it is not needed, so that is an option on number four. It's less than a quarter mile or not needed is zero points. So that should bring some of those renewable projects or ones that do not need sewer and water, that's going to bring their score down without me having to say it. Other than that, it's just kind of a huge format change. So if you guys have any, I will take any feedback, you're not going to hurt my feelings. I want it to work for us in our county in the manner of development, not necessarily renewable projects, which is kind of a hot button right now, but this needs to work for everything. Residential, warehouse, renewable energies. It needs to work for any use that is taking ag land out of production. So please look it over. If you have questions, you guys know where to find me. The information, or my information is on that second page, you can find me there. Let me know what you think.
Vicki, it looks really easy to read and understand.
Oh, good.
I like, I like the format.
That's what we were going for.
Yep, I like it.
I agree, it looks, it looks much, you know, cleaner and more updated, so.
Yeah.
Looks nice.
Thank you. I will pass that along, it's kind of been a group effort. I'm not going to lie, the initial one that I had was pretty much the same, just changed things. But then when we had the opportunity to be at home and work on, on things.
Well, that's making lemonade out of lemon.
It really, it really worked out, so. Yeah, and Brian, I will be gone for the land use meeting. I've got a meeting in Springfield for two days. But if I email you this, would you be able to give it to the development, or, I guess, land use group?
Yeah, you could do that, yeah.
And they can take a look at it? I'm not sure in which order we should approve it. I mean, I want it to work for you guys. You guys are the ones that look at this, or use it, use those scores when we're able to. So I want your input on this. And then we'll see if the development committee, yeah, or, gosh, the land use committee receives it.
Would, would it be enough to, to give us feedback before the, or, I mean, do you want to try to get it approved at the land use meeting in December, or not?
That's the one I'm going to miss in December. I could do January.
Oh, so you just want me to hand it out?
I just want you to hand it out, I want...
Let them, let them take a look at it, and then we could, we're going to have a December zoning board meeting.
Perfect.
So if there's any discussion there, you know, they can give feedback on that one, so.
Yep. Yeah, that'd be wonderful. I'm so sorry, I know it's been highly anticipated, so here's the final reveal.
Thanks, Vicki.
Thank you.
All right, there's no one present for public voice. Brian, any reports or updates from the county board?
Uh, I think we just had one, it, it was approved.
Yeah, was that, yep.
So I think I have a total of, like, I think I have a variance, a mini storage, and maybe two lots, less than 35 acres. So I think there's maybe four petitions for next month. So nothing too controversial, I don't think.
Sounds good. All right. I will need a motion to adjourn. Fred? Any questions, comments at all before we adjourn? Nope, call for the vote, all in favor, say aye. Post, say nay. All ayes, motion's approved, we are adjourned. Thank you.